The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Carter. Seventeen present.
The quorum being present. We also, we'll be led today in prayer by Pastor McGill. But before we get to prayer, I want to just introduce a couple special guests because they have to leave right away. This is a...
I'm Angelie Brockmire and Daisy.
Daisy, and that's over here is Nicole. They're my neighbors and they're going out to see what their neighbors do, you know? So it was nice having them here today. Say your name.
I'm Nicole.
And when is your birthday?
I'm the wife's wife.
Yep, so her birthday is coming up. So everybody say happy birthday to Nicole. Thank you so much for coming down. I'll see you guys, see you guys a little bit later tonight. All right, bye-bye. And we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Devon McGill of Corinthian Baptist Church in the beautiful 11th Ward.
Thank you, President Reed. I would like to give honor to President Reed and to all the distinguished and honorable men and women of the Aldermanic Chamber. It is truly a blessing to be here amongst you this morning. And we will proceed with the prayer. With closed eyes and bowed heads, if we may, Lord God of heaven, we thank you for having this, the opportunity, to come and serve in the capacity in which you have placed us. The Bible says in Romans 13:1 that "All powers are given under the direction and power of God." And we would ask, Lord, that you would guide us in the proper direction as we lead the city. We would ask that you would bring us together in the spirit of unity and gratitude to that which you have placed us over, Lord God. Allow us, Lord Jesus, to move forward and to take the city forward in all things that might give it benefit for all its people, Lord God. Touch us, Lord, in a mighty way. Allow us to feel your presence in this chamber as we make the decisions that will take this city into the direction that you would have it go. Bless us, Lord God, to be guided in a direction that you would bless every district and every Alderman and every Alderwoman in this place to be guided by your hand. Touch us, Lord. Keep us together, Lord God, and guide us in your heavenly direction and give the whole city a blessing that we are not able to receive. Because of what you've done for us, we want to serve in a proper capacity. Let he who is greatest among you be your servant. And we are serving you as we serve the people of this city. In the holy and divine and master's name of Jesus, we thank you for what you've done, what you're doing, and what you will do. In Jesus' name we pray, and all his people said, "Amen."
Introduction of our guests. Any introduction of our guests? Alderwomen from the 14th?
I'd like to introduce as my honored guest Senator Harry Kennedy, Committeeman for the 14th Ward, Demetrius Alfred, who represents firefighters Local 73, located in the beautiful 14th Ward, and Gary Otten from Painters District Council, Number 2.
Alderman from the 26th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce as my special guest today, Mr. Dell Piggy, who's Director of Congressman Clay, First District Office. Thank you.
Also, before we proceed, Alderman, I want to say I apologize for last week. You have been a great member of this board, so I look forward to working with you on other things in the future. And again, I apologize for all. All right, thank you. Alderwomen from the 15th?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Today, I'd like to have as my special guest the committee woman of the 15th Ward, Ms. Missy McDaniel Clinton.
Alderwomen from the 20th?
Mr. President, members of the board, today we have as our special guests of the board Keith Taylor and Todd Hake from Carpenter's District Council of Greater St. Louis.
Alderwomen from the 3rd?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest today Linda Primer and my grandbaby Jarton Hooker-Bosley. She was around here someplace. She usually gets in your spot.
Alderwomen from the 9th?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour, who's on that side today. So he kind of threw me off. I didn't see him when I did.
Alderwomen from the 16th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lancia with AGC and David Holmes with the Plumbers and Pipefitters.
Alderwomen from the 4th?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest the Ameren family and Mr. Leroy Grant from AT&amp;T. Also, my very special guest today is Ms. Mavis Thompson.
Alderwomen from the 22nd?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest Mr. Leroy Grant and Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T and Sheila Jones. Haven't seen her in a while from Ameren U.E.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwomen from the 7th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of our minutes from June 20th.
Move by the Alderwomen from the 7th, second by the Alderwomen from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
We will dispense with line items 7 through 10, first reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 97, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordered as recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Management and Operation of Parking Facility Services Agreement, AL 267, between the City and ABM Parking Services Incorporated, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 98, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordered as recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Investment and Apportement authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller to execute and deliver the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement by and between the City and Bi-State Development Agency concerning the parties' parities' cooperation effort to operate a regional interoperable public safety communication system containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 99, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann and Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Magnolia, Oregon, Ohio Avenue, scattered sites, redevelopment area, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 100, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3304 Shenandoah and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 101, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3130 Ohio and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 102, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5624 Magnolia and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 103, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4019 Magnolia and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 104, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5320 Brandon, 5214 Walsh, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 105, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2340 South 11th Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 106, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1041 Shenandoah containing a severability clause. Board Bill 107, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3904 Hartford and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 108, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3804 and 3822 Humphrey and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 109, sponsored by Alderman Villa and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 514 Holly Hills and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 110, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5132 Daggett and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 111, sponsored by Alderman Cone and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5103 through 05 Wicklow and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to Committee?
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills 97 and 98. To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills 99, 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, and 111. That's the extent of reference to Committee.
Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 95, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordered as authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller to execute and deliver a memorandum of agreement for the purpose of providing trash removal services and receptacles at designated metro bus stops by the City's Refuge Division as specified in the memorandum of agreement for a term of one year in the amount of $200,000 and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 91, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordered approving the...
Give me some order.
Approving the release and termination of a reversionary interest in certain property known as 4205 Rear Duncan, 4240 Rear Duncan, and 315 South Sarah, authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed for said property and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 92, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordered approving the petition of various owners of certain real property to establish a community improvement district establishing the Uthlick South Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 93, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann and ordered approving the petition of various owners of certain real property to establish a community improvement district establishing the 1831 through 2000 Sydney Street Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 12, Committee Substitute as amended, sponsored by President Reed and ordered providing for and directing the submission to the qualified voters at a special bond election to be held at the time of the state general election on the fourth day of November 2014, of proposals for incurring indebtedness and issuing general obligation bonds and evidence thereof in an aggregate amount not to exceed $199,500,000 upon the assent to the said proposals, respectively, of two-thirds of the qualified voters voting thereon and containing an emergency clause. The following Board Bills were reported out the Health and Human Services Committee. Board Bill 66, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Arnowitz and Alderman Schmidt and ordered pertaining to the adoption of a policy supporting the practice of the trap-neuter return of feral cats containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordered pertaining to enforcement of code violations relating to the health and safety and enforced by the Department of Health containing a penalty clause and an effective date. That's the extent of our second readings.
We dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 63, sponsored by Alderman Carter, Ingracia, Williamson and French and ordered as establishing the Office of Financial Empowerment. Board Bill 82, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordered as authorizing the execution of a commercial lease with an option to purchase between the City and R. and C. Company and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 51, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordered as related to Order 65857 pertaining to the redevelopment agreement between the City and Grand Center Incorporated as amended, affirming authorization of an application for tax abatement for 634 North Grand Project relating parking and parking lot improvements and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 70, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4517 through 25 South Kings Highway and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 76, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderwoman Davis and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1515 through 21 South 39th Street, 3901 through 05, 3907 through 09 Folsom, 3861 through 69 McCrea, 3867 Lafayette and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 20, sponsored by Alderman Valmer and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5223 Elizabeth and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 71, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3822 Flag containing a severability clause. Board Bill 72, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordered approving a redevelopment plan for 2622 through 24 Cherokee. Board Bill 73, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3023 through 25 Allen and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 74, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3818 through 20 Arsenal and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 75, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3433 McKean and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 77, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2017 Allen and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 78, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordered approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3150 through 56 South Grand and 3515 through 21 Juniata and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 79, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3806 Flag and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 80, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann and ordered as approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2629 South 11th Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 48, sponsored by Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Williamson and Alderman French, Alderwoman Murphy and Alderwoman Ingracia and ordered to rename a public park formerly known as Dwight Davis Park is dedicated as the Gregory J. Carter Park. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderwomen from the 17th, you recognize on the perfection consent calendar?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwomen from the 17th, seconded by the Alderwomen from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 55, sponsored by Alderman Cone and ordered as to repeal Chapter 15.86 of the St. Louis Revised Code relating to fortune tellers.
Alderwomen from the 25th, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill Number 55?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to perfect Board Bill 55.
Moved by the Alderwomen from the 25th, seconded by Alderwomen from the 24th. Alderwomen, please proceed.
This is a Board Bill that was very much discussed over the last session. And actually, I first introduced this Board Bill in the last session. This Board Bill pertains to repealing a code pertaining to fortune telling in the city of St. Louis, which is currently illegal. And in the last committee meeting that we had, I had actually offered an amendment based off of considerations from some of our colleagues regarding their concerns. The amendment failed. And the committee then decided to stick with my original Board Bill, which I appreciated, and was passed out. So with that, I, you know, am asking for favorable consideration again.
Any further discussion? Alderwomen from the 23rd?
I would just ask for a roll call, Lou.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwomen from the 25th, you recognize the close.
Thank you. I renew my motion, Mr. President.
It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill Number 55. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt. I didn't hear. Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Kennedy. 24 aye votes, one no vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderwomen from the 25th, and perfected Board Bill Number 55.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Third reading.
Board Bill 83, 84, 85, 62, 65, 67, 68, 69, 86, and 87.
Alderwomen from the 17th, you recognize on third reading consent calendar?
I move for the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwomen from the 17th. I entertain a second. On our motion, seconded by the Alderwomen from the 6th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman French. Twenty-six aye votes, no no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the seventeenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
We'll dispense with line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board Bills eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, sixty-two, sixty-five, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, eighty-six, and eighty-seven.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to then that these may become law. motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution ninety-four sponsored by President Reed. The Board of Aldermen urges the state of Missouri to adopt legislation requiring disclosure of the volumes, types of petroleum, petroleum products, and petroleum derivatives, transportation routes, and the frequency and duration of transfers of petroleum so that the state and local communities can be fully informed of and plan for the risks posed by the transport of petroleum by rail.
Alderman from the eleventh, you recognize on resolution ninety-four, which is actually your resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that board resolution number ninety-four be adopted.
Unanimous consent. Here are no objection. Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, board resolution ninety-four speaks to a problem which has been going on for quite some time and over the last year and a half or so, the movement of this Bakken shale oil, which it is my understanding is considerably more volatile than a lot of other stuff that railroad ship has been coming through our neighborhoods. After a tremendous amount of citizen involvement, Mr. President, and interaction with the Union Pacific Railroad, two public meetings with our fire chief, Chief Jenkinson, which you and your staff attended along with myself and the Alderwoman from the thirteenth just this week. So one of the Alderman from the twenty-fifth fortune tellers told me that this particular resolution needs to be on a fast track. That's a play on words, obviously. Not a very funny play on words, but it's a play on word. At any rate, Chief Jenkinson certainly realizes the impact that any type of unfortunate accident would happen in an urban area like the city of Saint Louis. I can only say that the Citizens Group, which has worked on this for a number of months, I think scored a huge victory on this past Monday evening when Chief Jenkinson got up and said that the cars that are going to be coming through our neighborhoods now with the shale oil, they're only going to have residue in them. Is the residue still explosive and dangerous? Yes. But he said it would be the difference between a rail car full of a hundred percent full of shale oil and one that may have ten percent residue oil and fumes in it. So this particular resolution instructs the state senator from the fourth, who was also in attendance at the meeting, Mr. President, see where my head is, and also the House Minority Leader have told the audience the other night that they're going to look into what the state statutes can do. As all of us realize, we as a Board of Aldermen and as a city have very little control over what goes down railroad tracks. Do they come through my ward and the thirteenth ward and parts of the twelfth ward in my neighborhood? Yes. But it's all done at the federal level. We have found through this exercise, although it may have started out a bit feisty, Mr. President, that the Union Pacific Railroad has been overtly cooperative with this group and they are, and the next week or so, sending their regional government guy from Kansas City in to meet with this group. So again, I think this is an exercise in the way things should be done and I'm very proud and hopeful that we adopt this resolution so that if in fact something can be done at the state level. And the resolution is really nothing more than to let the existing agencies know that this dilemma exists. It's not a new dilemma, but I think the fact that we're talking about it really makes good common safety sense.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. And I do believe that there's an error on this because I think the Alderman from the eleventh is the primary sponsor and Alderwoman from the thirteenth I thought was a sponsor and then I'm co-sponsoring it also. So with your approval, Alderman from the eleventh, I'll ask the clerk to make sure to correct that on the final.
Mr. President, you're asking my approval?
Just want to make sure you could...
I'm flattered.
All right. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. It's the Alderman from the eleventh is primary sponsor, Alderwoman from the thirteenth is sponsor, and then I'm also a co-sponsor of the resolution.
So noted.
Alderman from the eleventh, would you like to move for adoption of the resolution now?
Mr. President, I did that in my opening comments, but I'd be more than happy to move once again that board resolution number ninety-four be adopted.
All right. The first one was for unanimous consent. Been moved by Alderman from the eleventh and I'm taking a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? Alderman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, members of the board, would the sponsor yield for some just questions of inquiry?
Alderman from the eleventh, will you yield for questions until Alderman from the twentieth?
I love your questions, Alderman.
Please proceed.
Alderman, I was unable to attend that presentation by the chief. So I think he indicated, do you remember how far he estimated this would impact neighborhoods if one of these, just one of these cars were to explode with this Bakken shale oil? I think it was a couple miles, wasn't it?
Yeah, I cannot give you the exact catchment area, but I mean clearly, this is stupid answer, we don't want it to happen. And these things have the impact, I think a lot of us have seen what happened recently when the propane tank in Philadelphia over the last forty-eight hours exploded. I mean, these things are, it's an ugly incident, that's why they call them accidents, but we are really being, our fire department is being extremely proactive, has recently gone through two weeks of intense training. Every one of the members of the Saint Louis Fire Department has gone through these training sessions sponsored by Union Pacific within the last couple of weeks to get ready for fighting this type of dilemma with the new highly volatile oil. We have requested, when I say we, it's my understanding that as we speak, there is a memorandum of understanding at the city concerts office, which is going to ask Union Pacific to send us some foam trucks, which we would house at the fire department across the street here in the case that something horrific like this would happen.
Well, and that was going to be one of my follow-up questions in terms of what sort of legal mechanisms we had in place with this handshake, understanding about what they were doing. But it caught my attention when the chief was estimating the impact of this. It looked like it was going to go well beyond the eleventh ward, maybe even beyond the state of Missouri potentially, but we've got a big river which might do some things but oil and water. I mean, the water's not going to put this stuff out. In fact, it might make it more explosive, so there's a lot of things with regard to that. Have we looked at doing something not only at the state level, but this appears to be a federal level because it's interstate commerce type of issues? I'm assuming that we've talked with our federal legislators as well.
Hopefully, Alderman, the group that is spearheading this from a citizen's standpoint, they certainly have got the federal people involved in this because they realize that's where the train meets the track at the federal level. And again, there are new standards being made up for, to increase the safety of the cars that carry this stuff. It is my understanding that the federal government has not come down with the exact guidelines yet. Union Pacific is already proceeding and building these cars that are going to be stronger. And this whole exercise has been, like most things when you're my age, has been an educational experience, what they do to maintain those tracks, how they monitor this, that, and the other. And again, it kind of gives you a feeling of, boy, there's a whole other world out there that, you know, we kind of take for granted. And again, I think Chief Jenkinson and his deliberations has been, you know, honestly frank and candid at these meetings and I think that the attendance was very good at both of them and I think the people walked away from those meetings with a new sense of security. But it's, again, it's, the dilemma is not going to go away because they actually carry stuff that is more volatile than this stuff.
Right.
Like an ammonia.
Right. And so I was going to suggest that this has impacts on a whole lot of other things as well, but before I get to that, do you know where these cars are now going? Because they're bringing this shale oil somewhere, so if we're saying there's only residue here now, I'm not sure exactly where it's going. And this is not just a NIMBY thing, this is, you know, public health and safety, but do we know where the cars are going now?
Gentlemen, I think, and I don't know that, I don't want to say that this is an accurate answer, the, in this realm, because of the Patriot Act and because of nine eleven, they have to tell the Missouri Department of Transportation when these trains are coming through their state, but they don't give them the exact time, is my understanding. And I think I heard the chief say, I think I heard the chief say that they are currently, they're going to be rerouted through Illinois, was my understanding. Now again, the ones that are going by, you know, the heart of the eleventh and thirteenth and twelfth wards and as they go down, certainly the Alderman from the twenty-fifth would be impacted, they go right through the twenty-fifth ward also, they're still going to contain, in effect, they're supposed to be empty. But the chief pointed out that this stuff is so flammable that the residue continues to be a safety threat.
Well, we hear the cars in the twentieth and they used to be in the old tent there in the ninth ward, so I mean, these railroad tracks go through a lot of areas here. I'm going to ask if you have an interest in making this end bank, obviously to indicate our interest in this, because I don't think it's just limited to this. There are other materials that go through that we probably should know about just so that we have these public safety things in place.
Yeah. Gentlemen, I think that the topic is certainly broad enough and I would welcome that if the board sees fit to adopt it in bank.
So I would move that we, first of all, I want to, I appreciate the efforts of the Alderwoman from the thirteenth and the Alderman from the eleventh and also the president and I would hope that we would do this in bank. I realize that this is not limited to a state issue, but it is one that's of importance to all of us.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, seconded by Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, that we pass resolution in bank, resolution ninety-four in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, prepare resolution ninety-four in bank.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Any further discussions? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number ninety-four. It's been amended in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Missed land is unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, housing meeting at eight-thirty, eight-thirty a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the twentieth?
Sir President, I realize that this is a very pleasant day weather-wise. I have some bad news for all of us. Not really bad news, guys. We missed the day for the Resolution of Independence that was passed or presented by Richard Henry Lee of Virginia, but we have not missed the true Independence Day because the Declaration of Independence was signed on August second, seventeen seventy-six. So you have two days to celebrate.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's good news. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I wanted to, first of all, wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July celebration. And I also wanted to announce that a co-sponsored event by the Saint Louis Community Empowerment Foundation, Urban League, Ameren the Klee Gas, and United Way, an energy conservation workshop. And that workshop will be held on July ninth at the Heritage House at twenty-eight hundred Olive from six to eight p.m. It's free, there's a lot of good information for folks to save on their energy bills and also learn about some of the other financing that's out there to help you do things for your home. And just an early announcement that yes, we will have the back-to-school fair at Shavis Arena and that will be on August second from nine a.m. to noon. And of course, you know, there will be school supplies available, a lot of family resource information, games and rides for children, senior service room for their information, food, live entertainment, lots of giveaways, and health screenings. So hopefully those who are in need will come and take advantage of that on August second at Shavis Arena. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Saturday, July the fifth, Benton, the Benton Park Neighborhood Association is having another concert in the park starting about four o'clock. It's always a lot of fun, so if you're not doing anything or if you just want to stop by, come on by and shake your booty.
All right. All right. Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth?
One. Couple of announcements. I think most of you have probably heard by now that Fair Saint Louis this year is in Forest Park. It should be a great celebration. Band Perry is there this evening. Tomorrow evening, Fourth of July, Bonnie Raitt is there for all of us old gals. There'll be a parade tomorrow morning starting at ten a.m. The Walendas, the flying Walendas are going to be walking on a tightrope across the Grand Basin and there'll be water skiing in the Grand Basin.
Oh, wow.
Not for us, for the professionals. I don't think at the same time. So I invite all of you to come to Forest Park. There is plenty of parking around in the areas. There's parking in the park, there's parking at SLU, there's parking at the Science Center, there's parking at Wash U, there are shuttles. You'll be able to get there. I doubt that it'll, it'll be a long time before we have a Fourth of July with this nicer weather, so I invite everyone to come to Fair Saint Louis this weekend.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-sixth?
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board. I just want to piggyback on what Alderwoman Cruzen said and she's been working very hard and so have I and Ogilvy along with Alderman Boyd and the city of Saint Louis Police Department, Fire Department, and Street Department when it comes to the VP Fair. Because we know we have a lot of residents that are, you know, maybe inconvenienced when it comes to parking and people trashing up the neighborhood, so I just want to thank the city of Saint Louis for doing a great job, you know, especially the Police Department, the Fire Department. And we just ask our residents to be a little patient. I know you're going to be a little inconvenient because it is in Forest Park, but just be patient and the police are there, you can call the parking enforcement officers, if they're in violation, they will ticket and tow. Let's hope that doesn't happen, but if it's necessary, it will. So I just want to like to thank the city of Saint Louis for being supportive of the VP Fair and the work that they're putting in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board, I move that we excuse the Alderpeople from the first and tenth wards.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. That's one strong though. Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn our meeting until next, yeah, next Friday, the tenth, eleventh.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth and I'm taking a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stand adjourned.